I'd like to call this meeting to order. This is a town council meeting, January fourteenth, 2025, at exactly seven P. M. Let the record also show that we do have a quorum, and so we will conduct business. And we also have Town Administrator Aitken and Town Clerk Gray in attendance. Could you please stand for the question?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So the first item on the agenda is to reconvene from our work session this morning. So could I get a motion to reconvene? I move that we reconvene the regular town council meeting. Second?
I'll second.
It's been moved by Councilman Rock, second by Councilman Ellis. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Hearing not opposed, motion carries. Next item on the agenda is to adopt the agenda. Could I get a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to adopt the agenda.
Okay. Second?
I'll second.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilwoman Toulson, second by Councilman Rock. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Hearing not opposed, motion carries. Next item on the agenda is announcements and proclamations. And so I'm going to make our judge come up, meet me over there by Mr. Rogers. I'm going to mess you up because they're going to stand right there. You're in the way. You're in the way. Judge McKim. I know. Well, it's like, where do we do this? So you can see, right? Uh-oh, we're going to do this. I'm really good at real one, I'm sure. Anyway, I have a proclamation for you. I have two things for you. So for those who don't know, when I first became mayor, ten years ago, we didn't have a judge retired. And so I asked Judge McKim to be our judge, and he accepted. So we've been together for twelve years. We kind of have this pact that we're going to retire in ten years. So anyway, this is the Town of Star Valley Ranch proclamation of gratitude, Judge Ronald McKim. We are here today to pay honor and celebrate the dedicated selfless service by Judge Ronald McKim to the citizens of the Town of Star Valley Ranch, Wyoming. And whereas the Town of Star Valley Ranch wishes to acknowledge, recognize, and express appreciation to Judge Ronald McKim for his outstanding and professional service as the Town of Star Valley Ranch Municipal Court Judge. I've got to get through this wrong. Whereas the Town of Star Valley Ranch wishes to acknowledge, recognize, and express appreciation to Judge Ronald McKim for creating a municipal court that is professional, patterned after the Circuit Court, and create an exemplary, well-run court that all citizens should be proud of. And whereas the Town of Star Valley Ranch and its citizens have greatly benefited from the corporate experience, education, and institutional knowledge shared with Municipal Court Judge by Judge Ronald McKim. And whereas the Town of Star Valley Ranch wishes to thank Judge Ronald McKim for his ten years of service to the Town of Star Valley Ranch as the Municipal Court Judge. Now therefore, I Kathleen Byers, Mayor of the Town of Star Valley Ranch, Wyoming, do hereby proclaim January fourteenth, 2025, as Judge Ronald McKim Day.
Yes.
Wow.
In the Town of Star Valley Ranch, and urge all citizens and town employees to join me in congratulating Judge Ronald McKim for his outstanding dedication to the Town of Star Valley Ranch, Wyoming, and wishing him many continued years of happiness and good health. In witness whereof, I hereby set my hand this fourteenth day of January in the year 2025. Where is it? On the counter. Oh, there it is.
The gavel.
The gavel, thank you so much. Yeah, you're welcome.
Let me just say something.
You can.
I have truly appreciated being here and working. I've worked in book venues for long, for six years, in Thane and here. And this is certainly the most professional, well-run group that I've ever worked with. But I had thirty-eight years in corporate management. This group, Jim, and Kristen, and Trevor, and yourself, and everybody that's been in that court, the council, it's been an honor to work with you. And one other thing, like I told you today, if anybody applies to be your judge, do a mental health exam. Because it is not one of the jobs you do as part of it. A year ago, we were at the Municipal Court Conference for the Judges of Wyoming. And one of our speakers was the Chief Justice of the Wyoming Supreme Court. And I sat right next to him. And he said, let me tell you something. He said, I've been every judge that you can be in the state of Wyoming. Municipal, Circuit, District, Supreme Court, and now Chief Justice. And he said, the hardest job I ever had in my life was being a municipal judge. And he said, I made mistakes. The thing is, you never know what's going to come before you because there is no precedence. And then over the years, the hundreds of cases that I've done, none of them have ever been the same.
That's good. It's good because they did come out.
Thank you so very much.
Thank you so much. All right. I do have another proclamation on here, but that individual's not here. So I'm going to sit in my nice chair and read this. This is for Ron Denny, who's, who didn't, he decided not to run again, and he's in Arizona doing that. So, but I do have one because we really appreciate all the work that Councilman does. So this proclamation is for Councilman Ron Denny. Whereas the Town of Star Valley Ranch wishes to acknowledge, recognize, and express appreciation to Councilman Ron Denny for his outstanding and dedicated service as a member of the Town of Star Valley Ranch Town Council from January 2021 to January 2025. Whereas the Town of Star Valley Ranch wishes to acknowledge, recognize, and express appreciation to Councilman Ron Denny for his unwavering dedication, excellent writing skills, and his focus on details during his time on the Town Council. Whereas the Town of Star Valley Ranch and its citizens have greatly benefited from the background institutional knowledge and organizational skills shared by Councilman Ron Denny. Whereas the Town of Star Valley Ranch wishes to thank Councilman Ron Denny for his work on the Finance Advisory Board and his detailed work on budgeting and other town finances. Now therefore, I Kathleen Byers, Mayor of the Town of Star Valley Ranch, Wyoming, do hereby proclaim the Town's sincere and honest gratitude to Councilman Ron Denny for all his services rendered. Oh, and witness thereof, I hereby set my hands this fourteenth day of January in the year 2025. So we'll send that to Ron. Okay. So next item on the agenda is to, we got the two proclamations. We have a public comments section, so if anyone has any comments, you can come up to the podium. If not, we'll move on to the next item. Do you have a comment?
I'm not sure this is the time. I have a comment about the new subdivision that's proposed.
It's not on the agenda anymore, so if you'd like to come up to the podium and state your name, then you can, we'd be glad to listen to you. That would be great.
Jen Buckley, and I live on Sugarloaf. I was down a month or so ago to talk to them. Does the city have an official position on the subdivision as far as he wants to cut a road into Vista West?
The city does not yet. We're waiting for some documentation from our engineering firm, so.
Well, from what I was told, I guess, by the minister, developers have to do a study, an impact study. Have they come, have they done it yet? And as when they push through the storage unit, you know, I mean, and I think, I went to the Planning Commission a month or so ago down there. They're going to have another one in a couple of weeks. And there was no representative from Town of Star Valley Ranch. Whereas X number of years ago, when they did the storage unit, there was a couple of councilmen that there. And I think there should have been somebody from the city beings that is going to impact the city street. I mean, I obviously am against it. I can't believe the people that live where that street's going to come through. There's four houses there, and I can't believe those, they may be here now, but I mean, those four people that live in those houses should be screaming bloody murder. I mean, it's, it's going to be a dust problem and everything else. And I just think we should have somebody down at the Planning Commission.
We will. We do have a plan. We do have people go, they'll be there on the twenty-second.
Because, you know, the, the way they did the storage unit, I'm sure they're going to do equally as bad a job on the subdivision. And they're certainly going to come in the future to try to get into the city so that, you know, you can pay their, what they don't want to pay. Like they wanted to get in to get water, so. And I, I have a question on, on the snow removal.
Okay.
What is, as I understand, you don't send plows out until there's six inches of snow? Is that correct?
No, this is kind of a comment period, not a, not a question. But no, the plows go out prior to that. It just depends on how much.
Well, is there official policy? Because I, as I understood, it used to be.
This is the challenge. What, where there's six inches in one plat, there could be twelve in another. So they pick a plat with the most snow, and that's when they head out.
Well, but, but it does there have to be?
It's not as likely one.
Does there have to be a minimum? I mean, obviously, half inch, I don't expect them, but who decided six inches? I mean, that's, maybe I'm incorrect.
We have a, on our website, we have the actual snow policy. I don't know that it says anything about six inches. I don't think it does, so I don't, I'm not sure where that came from to be asked. But there are a lot.
Sure seems that way. So, so do we have adequate snowplow people this year?
We do. We do. Comment? You have a comment?
Yes. I have a good, I have a good comment.
You say comment?
Victor Medea, forty-seven, Hashtag Drive. Yesterday, we saw our new snow thrower machine work up our street. First, they widened our street, which we really kind of appreciated. And they left the burn right in the center of the road. And this new machine came up. And as he got to our driveway, he was throwing our side. And when he got to the driveway, he threw the other side. And then, when he got past our driveway, he put it in full force, and he threw that snow way in our extra lot, which we don't mind because this was going away. But thank you. That machine is excellent.
You're welcome. Thank you. Okay. Do you see any other comments? Nothing? Okay, we'll move on. All right, let's see. The next item on the agenda is to adopt the consent agenda. And I am going to read through the consent agenda, and then we'll get a motion. So the first one is to improve the minutes from December twelfth work session and December twelfth regu, or tenth, sorry, tenth regular meeting. Staff appointments. Trevor Aitken, Kristen Gray, Loretta Mason, and Jim Rogers. All of those people are appointments based on statute, right? So we renew those every once in a while. Community board appointments. Fred Summerfelt will be, he's extended to a three-year term on the Planning Commission. And then the dispersments and the special municipal officer. I know that a lot of you like to read the dispatch report, but they did some upgrades, the county did. And right now, they're trying to fix what they created. So we won't see that report this month. Hopefully, we'll see it next month. All right, can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I so move to adopt the consent agenda.
Okay, second?
I'll second.
Okay. Motion made by Councilman Merrill, second by Councilman Rock. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Hearing not opposed, motion carries. So the next item on the agenda is, it looks like we've got four ordinances. And so if I could get a motion to read the ordinances by summer, or by title and summary only?
I so move to only sell about the ordinances by title.
Second?
I'll second.
All right. Moved by Councilman Merrill, second by Councilman Toulson. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Hearing not opposed, motion carries. Next item on the agenda is the first ordinance. This is an old, this is an old ordinances, so this is ordinance 2024-21 Administration Municipal Court. I'm not even sure the name of the thing. Okay.
So this is ordinance 2024-21 Title III Administration, Chapter Thirty-five Municipal Court. This is the third reading. This is an update to the bond schedule and court appearances, and it goes along with the update we recently did to the short-term rental ordinance. So it's up, it's adding bonds for short-term rental violations for operating without a permit. I would like to move that we approve the third reading of Title III Administration, Chapter Thirty-five Municipal Court, ordinance 2024-21.
Okay. Moved by Councilman Rock, second?
I'll second.
Second by Councilman Ellis. Any questions from the audience on this ordinance? Counsel? Okay. Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Aye, hearing not opposed, motion carries. Next item on the agenda is, this is a third reading, and this is Title III Administration, Chapter Thirty-three Town Organizations. And this is, the explanation is to, never mind. I think, I told these guys I was more nervous my last meeting than I think I was my first meeting ten years ago. Anyway, let's see. So I'll explain it really quickly. This is just to eliminate the road advisory board. And yeah, again, this is the third reading for this one. So can I get a motion for that one? If anyone would like to make a motion. Because if not, it will die. This has been a bit, the, the first reading of this was unanimous. The second reading was three-two. And now I don't know where we're going to stand tonight. And so I'll make the motion to get it going. I make the motion to approve Title III Administration. Second? All right. So no second? And so that means that we're going to be, but I guess the way it is? Believe it the way it is? Perfect. All right. Okay, next item on the agenda is new ordinances. And I believe this is ordinance 2025-01. Who is going to do that one?
Do that one higher if you like. It's planning. This is ordinance 2025-01. It is 2025, isn't it?
Yes. First one?
Title fifteen Land Usages, Chapter One Fifty-four Zoning. This is going to update the existing language to remove the deposit for plat amendments, update the administrative fee to be set by resolution, and to change language to better match other town code. Some of which is now that we have a planning commission instead of a planning and zoning board, doing those kind of administrative updates. So I move that we approve the first reading of ordinance 2025-01 Title fifteen Land Usages, Chapter One Fifty-four Zoning.
Okay, second?
I'll second.
Okay. Motion made by Councilman Rock, second by Councilman Merrill. Any questions from the audience on this one? Counsel? No? Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Hearing not opposed, motion carries. Next item on the agenda is ordinance 2025-02. And this is in general regulations. And I believe Councilman Merrill, this one?
So ordinance 2025-02 Title nine General Regulations, Chapter Ninety Animals. Explanation meaning adding a section to existing code to address mitigating wildlife interaction with residential trash containers. So I so move that we, or I'm going to make a motion for passing ordinance 2025-02.
Okay, second?
I'll second.
Okay. Moved by Councilman Merrill, second by Councilman Toulson. Questions from the audience?
Right here, miss.
Okay, okay.
Right here.
Podium.
Victor Medea, Chairman of Nexo Resource Board of the town. A year and a half ago, we researched this about the bear cans. Now, these bear cans are different from the regular trash cans. And I've looked it up, and each can is like $350 to $500. I'm just curious, who's going to pay for the bear cans, the trash cans? Because they're extra things. Because when they lift them up on the truck, the lock disengages, and they can trash it. Now, these other cans, there's no locks on them. $350 to $500? Who's going to pay for them? And I'm not in that area that we explain in the plaques. But somewhere, some people are going to be a little upset. Maybe not, but I'm going to say maybe eighty percent will be. That's, that's, that's where I'm coming from. And we talked to a person here from Jackson a year and a half ago. He works in sanitation there. He says those cans, they're expensive, but they have a different type of can where the truck has to have the ability to trash them. And I think the ones I looked at today and yesterday, it's just a regular trash can, but when they lift them up, the lock slides open, they trash it. So I'm sure our disposal companies could use it, but the truck, right on the can, right on the can. Thank you.
I'll just respond to that really quickly. Obviously, in writing this, I had to do some due diligence to make sure that I could afford it even, because I'm definitely in this too. The cans that I looked at were at least four hundred, so they're quite expensive. So some other ideas, just to, you know, live along with the wildlife that we have, is there are some things on Amazon from anywhere from $15 to $35 that I ordered that I found would actually hold the lid down until a garbage, you know, disposal company comes along. There is disposal companies that actually will rent you a can for $13 a month at the most. So there are other options. You can even enclose your garbage can, so keep it in a garage or anything of the sort. So I do feel like this is not an abnormal request when we're starting to have bears wandering in. I don't think it's a new thing, but if we can help it, that would be great.
You have more questions? I knew we would have questions.
Daniel Melton from Redwood Circle. And I guess my, my thing was to say, what is it going to cost the citizens for that? I feel like we're the people that are on the plaques next to the forestry line. It's a, you know, we're being penalized where, you know, if you're going to make one set of group of plaques pay for such, then everybody needs to pay for it within the city. That same black bear that was euthanized last year, he got to drive trash twice. It was no big deal, I picked up the trash. I also put straps on my garbage can. He got into it anyway. Today, I called West Bay, and they said that the cans that they have is about $400 to $500. The cans that they use for Teton County are pretty much a joke. It's a bear knocks it over, knocks it over, the lids will come right open. It also said that the cans are difficult for elderly people to open up, especially in the wintertime, which we don't need those type cans in the wintertime. And then the, also the, what else did I tell you? But it was the main thing with them knocking it over, it just automatically just opens up once they knock it open anyway. So I just, I feel like we need to table it more, you know, especially unless we have like multiple instances. We have one in how many years? And it's the black bear. There, I can understand if we were in an area that we had drizzly, but drizzly have not made it this far out yet, so.
But I can just give you some reference, that's all. In Lake Tahoe, I've actually got a lot of them alive, who are, Paul Boardwell, three-eight mill branch. And they have steel, the handle, two old, the old-fashioned garbage cans, you know, the big rubber made or whatever they are. And it has a handle on it with a hex handle on a wire. So it's not a big deal for us, but you can't leave the hex handle in it because the bears open. So you have it dangling down. And it, yeah, it, somebody has to get out of the garbage truck, open it. So the cost is going, going somewhere, not down. And the bears up there are a real problem. I mean, my sister, they came out, or some guy was walking by, and the bear opened up her Mercedes, and she must have left something under one of the seats, and the bear was in the Mercedes. Okay, so they're much more aggressive than we've got here. But that, every house has a steel thing that costs probably thousands of dollars to have to put your cans in. It's not, it's not $300 or $400 a year. So I think we don't have a problem yet, so let's hope we don't.
I think everybody has said their, you know, they've said it very well. Who are you? Oh, Wade Bitter, Black Twenty Two, Bearville. The one thing that I'd like to think about is, why are we doing it? Is it because of the bad behavior of people taking their garbage out at night and leaving it out there? Or is it early in the morning? Again, I keep my garbage in the garage until I know it's morning, and I move it out. Shouldn't everybody do that? Does that avoid the problem? So again, everybody has said it, just giving you a few thoughts. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments?
My name is Russell, and I live on Friday. Effective here.
Who are you?
Well, your hair, you said. You should be my whole.
First of all, I'd like to see some information on how big a problem this really is. Okay, and, and how much damage we have, and some of the other issues that should underlie any new regulation. In municipal governments, in governments of any kind, we often devise a solution, and then we or devise a, a rule, and then we go, okay, I've got that wrong. We devise a solution, and then go look for the problem. And I'm wondering if maybe that isn't a little of something we have right now. I don't know. And again, I'd like to see some data on how much we've suffered from this, how many bears. Wade talked about get your damn garbage cans inside until you have to. And we are, I don't live in the bear neighborhood, according to the. And we are, I don't live in the bear neighborhood, according to the map. But, but as neighbors, you know, we, we talk to each other and say, okay, can, you know, you drag that garbage can out for me, cause I'm gonna be gone for three days? And, and as a, as, something I try to do is, I know my neighbors, and if the garbage cans are still out, you know, when the garbage can is gone, I try to make it a, a point to stop by, get hold of the garbage can, drag it in up next to the garage. In addition, that kind of discourages thieves and meth heads too. So that they don't know for sure if somebody's there. Anyway, like I say, let's be careful and not, not have a solution mandated, and then go look for a problem.
Thank you.
Who are you? Point Sidaway, plat thirteen, lot eleven. And if you don't believe what I'm gonna say first, we live in the bear zone a while ago. We had a bear, I've come down to our neighbor's house and tear our things up last year, so I think we're in the bear zone. But I have a solution, so I don't have to pay any money. I was watching. It's, obviously, there's a lot of doubt and uncertainty about us as citizens, as to why we're doing this on a blanket base. I would recommend that you make one alteration, is define a bear zone, if you can choose to. Make sure you include all of us that are next to the national forest. But why don't we let our judge determine who has to pay that money? If you don't set your car, if you set your garbage out overnight, and a bear gets into it, and you end up in court, you got a fine for it, then you are required to have a bear deal, or you don't get garbage, something like that. And let those of us that have garages or safe places to put our garbage, leave it there. And we put our garbage out in the morning, we take it in at night. I'll just tell you a quick story. My neighbor and I, he's a little younger man than I am, but we put our garbage cans out separately, and then we raced to see who brings each other's garbage. So I'll tell you what, our garbage cans are in my garage or next to it within five minutes after that garbage truck, either me, the one that, or my neighbor. Anyway, so just very, very seriously, let the perpetrators pay, but let those of us that are biting the law not have to pay, just to treat that as.
Thank you. Any other comments? Town council?
I have a couple of comments. So I support us as a town trying to minimize conflicts we have with our wild neighbors. I'm not convinced yet that we're at the point where we need bear-proof garbage cans. I think there might be some other solutions. That was an interesting one that Mr. Sidaway just came up with. So I would like the town council to have a bit more time to look into this before we move forward, move ahead with this particular requirement for some of our citizens. We do plan to have the planning commission look at the bear zones as well, just to, and we've also started a conversation with Wyoming Game and Fish about that as well. So for right now, I would be a no on this as written, but I would like to make a motion to postpone this ordinance until the March town council meeting. That would give us two more months to put information out to the residents, make any changes to this first draft of the ordinance, and then determine as a council whether we think we need to move forward with it or not. I was trying to get information out of Game and Fish sooner, but that takes a little time apparently, so that's where I am there.
Okay, we already have a motion on the table.
Was that a motion?
She wants to make another motion.
I believe I can make a motion.
We already have a motion on the table.
The motion on the table, the motion to delay can precede that one?
Yes.
So was that a motion?
Yes, I move that we postpone this ordinance until the March town council, regular town council meeting.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, now I'm gonna put that one back out to the council for discussion. So I, I have a couple of things. We, we already have in ordinance that I think we could add to, to cover this and not have this brand-new ordinance out there. We have a section on animal feeding in, in chapter ninety, which I think the council should look at that and see if it already makes sense, cause it does mention bears in there. And then I'm also against the current one, although I think it's important that we do address this issue. Somebody had a question about how many other bears. I know of two. The other one was on Redwood Circle, by the way, and that was eight years ago, that they moved.
There's been four.
But you may have seen more, so, so four within the town.
Four total that I've heard of.
Okay, okay.
And that's over, I can't tell you ten years.
Hold on.
Just a point of order.
Yes.
When you have a motion to postpone, you're supposed to vote on that immediately, and then you have your end discussion, or you. I defer to my partner, Derek.
Yeah, he's better at this than I am. So anyway, okay, well, that's, anyway, all right. So I guess I'll take a vote. All in favor to postpone this discussion?
Aye.
Aye.
No? Okay, so we will postpone this. We don't, did you give me a date to postpone this?
Yes, March town council.
March town council. All right, there you go. Okay. All right. So we don't have any public hearing or action items this, this evening. We do have the mayor and the council, so I don't really have anything at the moment, but is anyone on the council? Have anything you want to talk about?
I would just like to mention, the first neighborhood watch is gonna be over at Three King Restaurant in the back in the event room on Thursday at seven o'clock, in the hall of the community as well.
Okay, what's going on?
Yes, Bruce Henning met with our water personnel last, two weeks ago, to go over the testing for the water in the town. If all goes well, and we continue to get negative tests, the chlorine will be turned off hopefully by January thirtieth. I'd like to thank Bruce for his, his help in bringing the staff up to speed.
Okay.
For the planning commission, as I mentioned, their next meeting is on the twenty-second of January at four P.M., which we'll, I'm sure we'll get that put out in an email. They're meeting a little bit early, and as I said, the, they're gonna look at the map as far as the bear conflict zones. And then the planning commission, I don't know if all the members are going, but a good chunk of them are planning to go to the Lincoln County planning meeting that will also be on the twenty-second at six P.M., because the mountainous subdivision is on that agenda, which is the one off of Muddy String. So we will have people in force at that meeting on the twenty-second for the county. Thank you.
Okay, perfect. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
I move to adjourn the meeting.
Okay, second?
I'll second.
Move by Councilman Tulsa, second by Councilman Merrill. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Hearing none opposed, motion carries. All right, that's it.